February Board of Trustees, once again, we're meeting virtually via Zoom, which means we're also on local access TV. So you know, it's a good thing everybody is decent, or as decent as we usually are. For those of you who are checking in late, both Denise and Linda had let us know that they weren't going to be able to attend tonight. So this is all of us. So I will call the meeting to order. And let me quick pull up my copy of the agenda so I can get rolling. So we begin, as usual, with the approval of the minutes from last time. This would be the meeting of June 16, 2020. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept them.
Our move that we accept the minutes is submitted.
All right. Thank you, Barbara. Anybody willing to second that? I see Amy wave hi. So once again, we'll go with waves hello rather than the verbal, because that just works better while we're on Zoom. So all in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand? All right, I see lots of hands. Anybody opposed? Same sign. All right, the minutes carry. Thank you again, Gail, for taking such good documentation of our meeting. Public participation, I like that. I noticed, Gail, that you included public participation. We're on public access TV. So that counts as public participation for last month and this month. Any communications that we should be aware of? And as usual, no, there's not, but I always have to do the formality. And then Bunny, did Linda provide you with a written town liaison report?
Yes, I have that for us.
All right. Would you please share it with us?
Sure. The Town Board continues to meet on Zoom. The town supervisor is meeting with department heads as he prepares the town budget. The proposed Shadow Pines Plan was discussed at a recent Town Board work session and was submitted to the Shadow Pines Advisory Committee for final review. And we have a public hearing on August 5th regarding whether to allow residents to have chickens on their property.
All right. Thank you. We can't really ask questions of Linda, but any comments or reactions to the town liaison report as presented? I suppose if you have questions for Linda, you can always send her an email.
Yeah, she added that as a line in her email to me. Any questions, please contact her.
All right. Thank you. All right. So let's go ahead and move on to our committee reports. We start, as usual, with finance and budget. Barbara, would you please walk us through the finance reports?
Well, this month, we got, we, our second certificate of deposit with Family First was up for renewal. It was maturing and the rates were even lower than they were before. They were, I think we got .025, and we got that rate because we actually have a savings account and a checking account with them. And I had checked with Key, M&amp;T, and also Ken and Degua, and they were, if we didn't have any of those accounts with them, we would be down to .015. So I just kept it where it was. It didn't seem like it was enough money to, we weren't doing anything with. And we have, both our other certificates of deposit that are with KeyBank, one is coming up on August 4th, I believe, and the other one on September 1st. So I'm hoping that you will all give me permission to do some research and to find the best rate I can, although it doesn't look like we're going to be doing very well. My thought on all of this is to take the shortest amount of time that we could do, and then hopefully in the next six to nine months, interest rates will have gone up again, instead of locking ourselves in for 24.
Yeah, that makes sense. I noticed from the motion from the previous meeting that we, I think we opted for not more than two years. We left you some discretion there to do less than two years if that was warranted. So would anybody be willing to make that motion then, to authorize Barbara to reinvest those CDs at the best rate she can find for not more than two years? That gives her the authority to do a 12 or 18 month instead of a two-year?
Or even a six-month.
Or even a six-month.
Because I, the shorter the time period right now, usually it's the other way. Usually the longer they're in there, the higher the interest. This is flipped. It's a very strange thing. So I would, I would like the authorization to use the least amount of time unless something changes in the next week or two.
Yeah, that makes sense. It may even make sense to have them be different times, because right now, it's unusual for us to have three CDs mature within three consecutive months. So if one's a six-month, if one's a 12-month, that may help us to stagger things out a little bit better.
That's a good suggestion. Let me look into that.
Yeah, good. All right. So we'd asked for a motion to authorize Barbara to best rate for least time, just to paraphrase. Would somebody be willing to make that motion? I think I saw Niraj wave. Thank you, Niraj. Would anybody be willing to second that? All right, I see Rachel. Thank you, Rachel. Any further discussion on that authorization? Then all in favor signify by raising your hand? All right, I see a wave of hands. So any opposed? Same sign? All right, thank you. That is approved. So Barbara, you are authorized to do the research and to reinvest those for us. Thank you. I'll hand things back to you to continue your report.
Okay. I think everything else is very self-explanatory. It looks like our spending is, I would say, on track, but it's a little back. It looks like we have a little bit of surplus built up. And I think that's because with not having the library open, people have been able to be a little more, well, not frugal, but there haven't been a lot of the expenses. So I think that that's good for the second half of the year. We haven't, we haven't spent half of our budget yet. So I think we're in good shape, and as usual, I expect that we will continue to be in good shape.
Absolutely. We'll be going into the second half of the year, which we're, we're coming into a big publishing season. A lot of the hottest things that we would ordinarily get, their publication has been postponed to later in the year. So, but they do expect those to be published sometime in 2020. So we'll be, we'll be getting those and we'll be billed for those. So that'll give us a chance to catch up a little bit.
Just for anybody who may be watching, so our total expenses so far is 42%, and we're halfway through the year. So yeah, we have 58% left for the other half of the year. All right. Any, any questions for Barbara or for Bunny on the monthly budget summary? All right. If not, oh, yeah, go ahead, Mos.
I just had a question about the monthly service report. Since there aren't any, you know, in-person programs going on, is it worth adding something in there about the online programs you're doing, just to keep track of, you know, those types of things you're doing?
I noticed that too, that that wasn't included. And yeah, I'd like to see our virtual programming counted into that.
The, the early literacy programs in library, birth to school entry, those figures for 2020 include the online figures that I get from the children's librarians. Is that what you mean, Melissa?
Um, yes, but also just, I know they've been offering some things on virtual programming online. I don't know how you keep track of how many people are viewing that, but just knowing what's being offered might be nice to include on that chart.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll note that for future.
Yeah, this, I was gonna save this for the director's report, but I might as well mention here, my teenage daughter did participate in one of the YA programs online the other week and really appreciated that. It was a big priority for her to be part of the author visits.
Lila has been doing a bang-up job with the YA programming, and she's had the assistance of Danny Galen's, one of our program aides, who's, who's doing a wonderful job assisting her and conducting some programs, like a writing program on her own. So it's, we've had some good offerings virtually, I think. If we're talking about the monthly public service report, I did just want to mention a couple of other weird things about that. You'll notice that there's a huge number for items loaned to other libraries. That was because we were the first library back online when they reactivated the, I call it the router, other people pronounce it router. They, that was deactivated while all the libraries were closed, and they, they brought that back. We, as I said, we opted to be the first one. We had an 85-page router. Ordinarily, we might have around an eight or nine-page router, but everybody got to work on it right away. And I was determined, we were going to get that Pennfield Public Library name out there as much as we could. We were going to be supplying the, the books that other people wanted. And that accounts for that little spike there in items loaned to other libraries. We've been sending an awful lot of material out. We've gotten a lot of material on our whole shelf too, but we've been sending out, I always like us to be the number-one net lender. So I'm, I'm sure this month we are. The other interesting number on that, on that little account is the reference, how huge the reference is. Of course, we weren't really, we were, it was fast and furious trying to do curbside. So we, we didn't have a lot telephone kinds of reference that we were doing, that we would ordinarily, and of course, no in-person, that we would ordinarily account for in the reference count. So what people were calling up and requesting was the equivalent of what we ordinarily would have recorded as a reference question if we were doing business normally. So that number was all the requests we got over the phone and via email for materials that were, were checked out as a result of those requests and for curbside. The other number that still amazes me is if you go all the way down to the bottom of the page, the wireless logins were almost as many as they are when we're open for ordinary business. How we can account for that, we don't know, except that everybody working in the library probably has, I'm one of the few people who doesn't turn her phone on unless she needs to use her phone. If you had your phone on and you worked in the library, when you came in, there was a ping against our wireless service for your telephone. So that's all I can think of, that and passersby, and whoever just happened to ping our wireless accounts for all the wireless logins we had. But that number just astounded me.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks for drawing our attention to that. I'm glad to see that the curbside pickups are captured on our chart and, and to know where that's being listed. As for the wireless logins, a couple of those would be me. When I was waiting for curbside pickup, it's just easier to hit the wireless login from the circle than to try to, like, use my own self-service. So, but.
Our wireless isn't supposed to go out that far, but it must be, and that's what we're, we're capturing. We're just close enough that we're, we're getting a couple pings.
Yeah, it, it does work in the turnaround. So. All right. Any other questions for Bunny about the service report? Okay. All right. If not, Barbara, are there other documents to go through from finance?
No, we're good.
Great. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the financial reports as presented by Barbara. Thank you, Amy. Anybody willing to second that? Thank you, Melissa. All in favor signify by raising your hand? All right, that carries. Any opposed? Same sign? All right. Thank you for your work again this month, Barbara.
You are welcome.
All right. Back up. So next up is personnel. Amy, anything to report from the Personnel Committee?
Um, I have received and compiled the Director's evaluations. And so thank you to everybody who sent those out. I'm meeting with Bunny next week to go over the results with her, and then we will have an, I'll send an email out to, or Chris can send an email out to schedule an executive session. Or I don't know if, would it make more sense just to wait until August after the meeting to have a?
Yeah.
Should we schedule it separately?
Well, let's kind of poll everybody who's here. Would you rather have a separate executive meeting in, say, two weeks to cover that, talk about the results of the Executive Director Survey? Or would you rather do that as an executive meeting after our regular August meeting? So it's either an extra-long meeting in August, or a separate meeting, just for the sake of example, two weeks from today. But we don't have to be locked into the date. Just what, what would you prefer? Separate meeting or a long meeting?
I'd rather have a separate meeting myself.
I would prefer a separate meeting as well. Yeah.
All right. So most people are in favor of the separate meeting. Anybody want to advocate for an extra-long meeting in August? And I think you can tell by the way I phrase that question which one I'm advocating for. All right. So we'll plan on that. So Amy or I will send out a link. I think probably it makes no sense to try again for Tuesday, since we know most of that is mostly available, but I'll send that out just to confirm with everybody. So look for an email from one of us the next day or two. All right. Thank you, Amy. Anything else from Personnel?
That's all for, for July.
All right. Thank you much. Strategic planning, Rachel?
We had our own Zoom meeting, and we decided that now would not be a good time to move forward with our survey that we had been planning, getting the public perception of how things are in the library facility-wise. I also sent Bunny an email, just following up with some other things, and she was able to report that some carpet cleaning had been done, and that she felt that that greatly improved the look of that, and some walls had been painted. And she had also said that we have, we don't need any additional approval if we want to update the signage outside the building. So I wanted to kind of talk with the board to see if that's something we want to pursue, and also Bunny, if that is something that we want to do, what our next steps would be. So we had talked about incorporating the logo in a more colorful sign out on the side of the building, replacing kind of the old-timey library sign that is currently near the book drop. And then we had also discussed even potentially a larger electronic sign closer to the road.
Now is probably not a great time.
Bunny, you cut out there for a second.
But now is probably not a good time to pursue the electronic sign near the road. Those cost at least $10,000, probably more each. And I, under the current financial climate, I can't see that would be received well. I'm not sure how much the, a new sign, I suppose depends on what you want it made out of on the library proper, the, the community center building proper would cost.
Anybody else?
Do we have signage on the doors? On the glass, on the doors?
I don't find that the library is within. We have our hours on the, on the side light, or whatever you call those things. But no, because it's, it is the, the door to the community center. So it doesn't have one specifically identifying the library.
Well, couldn't it be both and just be painted on the glass, or whatever they do? I mean, in addition to having the new sign.
I, I'm, I'm not sure how receptive the, the town would be. It's their building. So I'm not sure how receptive they would be to having one department of the town identified on it. I can ask about that.
Well, we could put everybody on it. We could put, you know, Pennfield Community Building, and you could put Public Library, the Rec Center, the Town Courts, and whoever else is there, and they could all be listed. But I was thinking that would be nice, and we could have our logo, the way Rachel was talking about, and then have another sign over by the book drop that would be a little more. So there's, so it's really clear to people that when they walk in the building, what they're going to find.
And I can broach the subject with facilities.
I think that's a good idea too, because, I mean, I didn't know really until a few years ago that that was the Pennfield Rec Center entrance. I think, you know, identifying that it's the library and the Rec Center, and, you know, it would be nice to have on the door. And that shouldn't be too expensive. I mean, usually I think it's vinyl lettering or something that they do, but, you know, that should be an easy, I would think, cost-effective way to add some new signage.
And it would.
That isn't terribly expensive, no.
And it, and it would avoid confusion too, just to put a little signage over there. Most people do come for the library, so I think it's appropriate.
For a similar reason too, we wouldn't want to do a big expensive sign by the road right now, because we want to be sensitive. Also want to recognize, people aren't coming into the building right now, so having more signage and information on the outside of the building might be appropriate. So. All right. So yeah, so Bunny, if you could, could check with the other departments to follow through on that on behalf of strategic planning. Make sure we have some, some nice signage and some, some signage that is legible from the turnaround, incorporates our logo, is welcoming to people, to let them know we want them, we want them here. They can't come into the building at the very moment. Anything else from strategic planning, Rachel?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Then bylaws and policies, Mary?
Nothing this month.
All right. Thank you. Communications, Niraj?
Yeah, the friends canceled the book sale.
Yeah. So I remember seeing, I couldn't remember if that was at the last meeting, or if that was just an email that came in afterwards. But thank you for, um, thank you for the work that you did in coordinating with them to look into that and communicating that decision back to us. So. And welcome to the meeting, Linda. Linda Cole has joined us. So.
It's been a lot of fun meeting, so.
All right. Bunny did read your report earlier in your regular slot. We're just down at the community reports, and Niraj has been sharing the Communications Committee.
Okay.
Niraj didn't mean to interrupt you. Anything else from your committee right now? No, thank you. And then foundation, this is also Mary.
Nothing this month.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I guess we're ready for the Director's Report. So Bunny will head back.
Did I miss that in the packet? Was there a written Director's Report that I missed?
No, I didn't do a written run one this month.
Okay.
There wasn't one last month either.
Uh, let's see. What should I talk about first? It's not the usual exciting report that I have because, just because of the circumstances we're operating under. We did have a couple of possible COVID scares. We dodged a bullet, though. It turned out people were properly cautious, alarmed about what they thought might be the symptoms, but they turned out to be negative tests, or there were so many degrees of separation away from the people, it ended up not having any impact on our operations at all. But there was a little bit of a scare with that. We had, when we reopened at the public last week, we had, it was fairly smooth. We tried to make it as gentle a reopening as we could, just to avoid having a crush that we were going to be unable to deal with. And it worked out just perfectly, the way we hoped. There was nice, gentle reintroduction of patrons into the library. We are, at the same time, scaling down curbside just a tad in anticipation of, now that we have to handle internal activity as well as the curbside, as we ramp up to Phase Two, I'm not sure when that will be. I think we have a week or two to go before everybody will feel comfortable going to that next phase. We are going to, when we reintroduce the computers, we're going to be, just to make sure everybody stays safe, we're going to be handling the computers in a little bit different way. The computers that we have left, as you saw from my reopening plan, we've cut the number of computers in halves, so we can accommodate people safely at the computer pods. We have removed the keyboards and mice at the computers, because we were envisioning an awful mess when there's a changeover in use of computers. We'd have to run down and wipe those all down. We were, we brainstormed how we could handle that with the least problem. And we decided to remove the regular keyboards and mice. We have wireless keyboards and mice to use at the computers. The patrons will check out the keyboard and mouse for each one is assigned to a particular computer. And when they're done using it, they will bring back the keyboard and mouse, and we can then easily wipe those down right at the information desks, store them for the next person to use. So that's going to be the most efficient way for us to make sure that everybody is being safe using the, the computers. As you know, when we have materials returned currently, everything's returned in the book drop. It's removed from the book drop, handled as little as possible, very safely. And then it's quarantined. It's quarantined for at least 72 hours, after which the Realm Project, which is run by OCLC, it's a research project that studies how long the, the virus can live on the surface of various materials that would be commonly found in libraries. And we take their advice for how long we need to keep something in quarantine. They have just completed a second phase of their testing, and they have discovered that the virus falls beneath the LOQ, which is the limit of quantitation. And that is when there is so little presence of whatever you're studying, in this case, the virus, that it cannot give you reliable results as to its viability. They found that that drops, drops below that, that limit after two days. So there was some discussion this week among the Directors of possibly changing the time we keep things in quarantine. Maybe we could back it up to two days. Just because it can't be measured accurately doesn't mean it's not present. And it actually did show that the virus in unreliably measurable quantities did exist for four days. So we're deciding as a system to stick with the three-day quarantine, but that's going to be relooked at as we get more data coming out of the Realm Project and some other ones to let us know whether we need to change that time period of quarantine. In the meantime, it is causing a lot of consternation for patrons, because they're returning things on their due date. We're quarantining them. On their records, it looks like those materials are going overdue, and we're getting a lot of questions from people. You didn't take this off my card. And so we're having to explain many, many times all about the quarantining. But I, I think people are getting the idea, more people, I think, understand it than not understand it. So it's not really a problem on our end to, to explain that. And we'll just see how much longer we have to do that.
Just picking up on that, and just to clarify for everybody, if you haven't seen the Communications, so the items are listed as overdue, but we're not accruing late fees for those 72 hours. So nobody's being actually penalized for that time. That stuff is in quarantine.
No, we, we have built into our rechecking-in process measures to. measures to avoid inadvertently charging somebody with an overdue fee that is not of their making. Um, so we've, we've got that built in. We've got it very generously built into our, our procedures.
Would it be possible to somehow acknowledge the person had returned the material and then keep it in quarantine? So you can avoid that problem and having people become upset. Cause I know I've had friends who've said to me, what's going on? I took my books back and I've gotten these emails and-
And it's, the explanation is right in the email and we've had it on our website. We've publicized it every way we can. Um, we are answering questions when, when people contact us, but no, the way it would be returned would be to handle it, to go through the return process, which we've been told we're not supposed to do for 72 hours. So there's no way of, of acknowledging those returns.
Yeah, uh, yeah, you can't really check them in without handling them. So I think this is actually an opportunity for us then as trustees to be advocates for the library and the library system. And if we are getting questions from friends who know that we're trustees, uh, that's an opportunity for us to explain the policy, uh, explain, hey, uh, you know, doesn't mean your, your, uh, um, membership is in bad standing. You aren't going to have to pay for it. This is just what we're doing to make sure to keep our staff safe and to keep other patrons safe from getting things. So, so this is a chance for us to serve as advocates. Um, but I'll be, I mean, I'm really one of those nitpicky things. So it bothers me when I see that a movie I've returned is still listed as overdue. Uh, and I just kind of have to deal with that being bothered thing myself. Uh, but this is a chance for us to back up our staff and to advocate for the library and to educate the public.
And I've done that, but I just, I would, you know, if we could just stop sending out the emails. I mean, you know, and, or do something, because there are a lot of people like you, Chris, who get those emails and they know, and, and if they say something, you say, oh no, you're not going to be charged. It'll be okay. And ask to go through this quarantine process. But you know, sometimes you get two or three of them and it seems-
Let me ask, let me ask about it. I, I think that came up in one of our discussions. And if we were to stop sending notices, that is not anything we can control here. That needs to be controlled by, um, the Library Corporation that runs our integrated library system. Whenever we ask for something like that, it means money. We'd have to spend a couple thousand dollars having them fix our system so it wouldn't send notifications. Then another couple thousand to have them fix it to send notifications again when we don't need it. But I'll, I'll double check on that to be sure. But I think that was what they call a project. And when they call it a project, that costs money for the, the, um, integrated library system has to do it.
Well, I can, I can understand that. And then of course, there are always the people who have not returned their materials on time.
Well, there are some that are legitimate. Absolutely. You're right about that. And, um, we, we kind of don't want them to skate by scot-free. They're already getting a little, a little bit of a benefit from, uh, our, making sure that our legitimate people don't, don't get inadvertently charged. Um, so yeah, we, they probably don't want to discontinue that altogether. But I can, I can check on that and see if maybe temporarily we can discontinue notifications for overdos at the very least.
Or, or also, also, um, we don't, we don't have to wait for a person to contact us as trustees or wait for, um, patrons to call up the library. We can really, if this, I think this is an issue because I see it on my app and I get, I don't get nervous, but I don't like seeing a red overdue thing on there. And so I think, um, on social media, even if you've said it once, it might pay to say multiple times in bold letters, not like a, not like a text saying, hey, if you've seen your materials overdue, don't worry. Um, if you've returned it on time, then we'll clear it. Maybe even using constant contact or something where we do have free access or anything, because this is something that's confusion. I mean, if, if people are confused by, by emails that are coming in and they, they're on our constant contact, uh, listserv, then we can send out something free and explain it.
Um, I think constant contact maybe is too limited. Um, and we try to reserve our constant context so we don't overburden people for, for things that are, we are advocating something a little more positive for the library. Uh, so I wouldn't say constant contact, but we can put something out on social media. Um, and I will also ask LAS about the, uh, discontinuing notifications.
I think constant contact, we, you should, I, I mean, we should really think about. I mean, yes, you reserve it for limited opportunities, but there might be, this might be an issue because people might be confused with an email and reinforcing it saying something's con- might be confused that you're okay, that might be appropriate. I'm just saying that you might want to revisit that instead of just dismissing, dismissing it right away.
Yeah, I, I mean, it sounds like a good idea to me. It doesn't have to necessarily be a daily reminder, but, but, you know, uh, an occasional reminder, whether that's once a week or every other week, just letting people know, by the way, we're still quarantining your materials to keep us safe, to keep you safe. Uh, things that are listed as overdue won't be charged for 72 hours. That is a positive message to the community to let them know about how we're trying to keep, um, keep everyone safe during this, uh, pandemic.
I agree with that.
Good point, Chris.
So a limited, limited audience though, and it's, um, because you know, we, it's not all of our, our patrons, whereas social media is available to all of our patrons. Um, and we try to be very judicious about the constant contacts we send out because we don't want them to get fatigue with all the other constant contacts we're sending out from Penfield Public Library. After a while, they won't even read them because they, they get so many from Penfield Public Library. So we're fairly careful about how we use constant contact, but I can, I can talk to Miriam about it and see what she thinks.
I, I guess I, I wouldn't get too hung up on the term or the medium. I, I think it's not, whether it's email or social media or constant contact or whatever, it's, it's more, like each of those have a specific term, but more regular contact with the community and how are we getting that message out to, to alleviate confusion, to create understanding, uh, and to remind people, um, you know, because a lot, a lot of things are changing and here's, here's what's happening, so.
We could only get them to read. It would be so much nicer.
I mean, do you know who updates the MCLS homepage? Because it would be nice if there was something on their, on their homepage about this.
Yeah, somebody downtown does that. I can find out who does that. Oh, yeah, I'll mention that to them because that would, I'll also write down here, MCLS page.
All right, um, sorry to get us too sidetracked. Um, you're in the midst of your director's report and we kind of had some questions about that one item. Uh, did you have anything more, uh, to share in your report?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, some of you may know that, uh, system-wide, there was a REGI group. That's R-E-G-J-I, and that's Racial Equity and Justice Initiative. They have been meeting for about a year studying institutional racism. And they are ready with their report now. They've been meeting with other experts in the community on this topic. And they are going to be making a presentation at an upcoming, uh, Director's Council meeting with the idea that there will probably be a workshop of some kind or training where we can begin to look at where we can, uh, watch for areas where possibly there has not been equity, uh, or social justice, or possibly even institutional racism in our organizations. So we're looking forward to working on something like that in the upcoming months. Um, we're making progress with our Ingram profile. Uh, we wanted to set up an account with Ingram to give us another vendor to, just so we can play that off against the current vendors that we use. And we're at the point where, um, the processing profile's been set up. We have a test order in. We're just awaiting receiving those to see how well that went in. And when we get that, um, Ingram has accounts with, um, clients like Walmart, Target. They deal with thousands. When they, a best seller comes out, they don't buy a couple thousand. They buy tens of thousands. So we're hoping that by having Ingram in our corner, we'll get a little better fulfillment on some of the, uh, popular items that we've been having a little bit of difficulty getting reliably from Baker &amp; Taylor. So we're making headway with that. Um, I mentioned before that we were trying to, um, reconfigure the way we accept donations and not only to keep, uh, keep staff here from having to handle things coming in from the outside, but just a more efficient process of handling donations. And people are still very eager to, um, donate to us there that despite the fact that we've said please for the time being, no donations, we've never stopped getting donations. Um, so we have arranged with facilities to install, as I mentioned, a phone and a doorbell uh, on our back, the back door of our library. It's currently, uh, leads out to an emergency door and it's right adjacent to the trailer that the friends have out there. Um, but we'd like to upgrade that sorting room so that they could do business for receiving donations directly right in that door of the library, so they would not have to come through the library and involve library staff handling them. So we're just, we're in the process of awaiting facilities coming in and upgrading that for our friends. Um, we had a promotion here, um, you know, with Judy Mathis's retirement. We had a little bit of bumping up, which left a library aide position, a part-time library aide position. And Lydia Finara, who is one of our excellent pages, expressed an interest in it. So she is being trained this week as our new part-time library aide in, uh, circulation. Um, our budget meeting got changed. It was scheduled for yesterday at one o'clock, but it was rescheduled for Friday at 1:30. So if anyone is interested in coming to that, it will be in the supervisor's conference room at Town Hall. And, uh, we got a copy of the trustee newsletter for everybody this week that Gail is in the process of getting out to all of you. And that's all.
Uh, with the hiring of the page to a part-time library aide, is that a, a hiring that we need to approve? Or is that because it's a promotion from within that doesn't need board approval?
Since it's not a new person coming in, it doesn't really need board approval.
And how part-time is this person?
16 hours a week.
16 hours a week? Is that a downgrade from the previous job?
The, the previous incumbent, the one who was promoted to clerk, worked 20 hours a week. But, uh, Judy Mathis evaluated it and she realized that we didn't need that person for quite that many hours a week. 16 hours a week would be enough.
Well, is that enough for that person? I mean-
He accepted the job under those terms, yes.
Great. Um, I'm glad you brought the budget meeting because I had a note to myself to ask you about that. So, um, one other question that I had for you, um, didn't really talk about. Now that we have been having people come back into the building to check out materials, pick up their holds on their own, any reaction to the interior, any reaction to, uh, the policy? Um, before we implemented the reopening, you talked a little bit about the reactions that, uh, Chyli had had. And just curious as to anything, any feedback from our patrons as they've been getting back into the building?
No, I think they've been a little bit startled with all the, um, precautions that we've been taking. It does look very different from the way it looked before, but, um, no, not really much comment at all. Most, most people were glad to be able to be back in the library.
Anybody else have questions for Bunny on, uh, director's report that was shared verbally?
Um, I prefer the written report. So going forward, it gives us time to kind of digest it and, uh, think about it instead of coming up with questions right on, on the fly. So I really, really appreciate it if it would be written.
Now, as we get back into the more normalcy, I'll be able to do that.
Well, it sounds like we're getting there since you're open again.
Yes, we're on our way.
That, Niraj, anybody else? All right. Thank you. Then, um, we'll move on to action items, decisions and deadlines. So the one action item is for, uh, me to send out a, an email to establish a time and date for our executive meeting, as we talked about during the personnel. Uh, any other action items, deadlines, decisions coming out of tonight's meeting?
Uh, Bunny is gonna look into the signage for the outside of the building, or, yes, the exterior signage.
Well, now wait a second here. Um, I, I don't know what everybody wants, so I don't, I really don't want to. I was able to find out that it was okay for us to go ahead and do this, but I have no idea what people, I mean, except for the door stuff, that the other sign, I, I don't really know what, what you're looking for, what everybody is looking for here, so.
Well, if you could look at the door itself and the signage on the door, I think that would be good. And perhaps we could all send our suggestions to Rachel with strategic planning and, and that might be a good way to handle that. I agree. I think that's, you know, it's hard to read everybody's mind and, you know, I might think one thing and Melissa could think something completely different. And, you know, if I think if we, if, since it's under strategic planning, it might be a good thing to do that.
Yeah, if everybody wants to let me know if they think it should be lit or, I mean, I, I think we want color, but, um, any suggestions, I can work with Bunny on that.
Good. Thank you, Barbara. That's, that's exactly what I was going to suggest was to have Bunny confer with, with Rachel and all of us filter our suggestions through, through her as chair of strategic planning, so. Um, yeah. No, we, we don't want to hang you to dry, Bunny. We, we definitely want to work with you. Okay, uh, so unfinished business. Uh, there is a piece of unfinished business from our previous meeting and that was that, uh, just in advance of the June meeting, Bunny had sent us out the document of understanding. This is the document, uh, by which we as a member library work with the Monroe County Library System. Uh, it's largely unchanged from the previous, uh, years. Uh, but since it had come out somewhat, uh, shortly before the meeting, we wanted to take a month to give ourselves a chance to look at it before making a decision. Um, so I'm bringing it back to the table. Are we ready to, uh, vote to approve that document of understanding? Do we need more time? Do we have any questions for Bunny? So, uh, if you have to search through your email, it came in as an attachment on June 4th, so. Again, it wasn't an urgent thing. I think we needed to have it back by September, but I'm also the opinion that if you can get something finished and out of your inbox, uh, it's good to do so, so. Do we need more time? Are we ready to make a motion to approve that, uh, tonight? So I can't make a motion as chair, so I'm really just kind of waiting on, on somebody else to speak up.
I would, I move that we approve it. It, I, I, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I read it when I first arrived and I read it again a couple of weeks ago. And I think that it looks like there's nothing in there that I would object to.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion to approve. Would somebody like to second that? All right. Thank you. I saw Amy's hand. Uh, any further discussion on that? So I will say I did read it when it came through and then read, read it again after our last meeting. I haven't looked at it in about that month, uh, but, uh, like Barbara, I didn't find anything objectionable at the time when I read it in June. All right, then I will call, uh, the question. All in favor of the motion to approve the document of understanding? Wave your hand to say hello. All right, that's lots of hands. Any objections? Same sign? All right. So thank you, Bunny, for getting that to us. Thank you, everybody, for that. Uh, that is one unfinished item off of our list. Uh, I don't have any new business to bring up tonight, uh, but I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Does anybody have new business that wasn't previously covered in our committee reports? Okay. Uh, then we're ready for claims, payment authorization, which I think, Rachel, that was you this month?
Yes, I move that we pay the vouchers in the amount of $13,223.92.
Thank you. Would somebody like to second that? Right, I saw Niraj with a thumbs up there, so that's our second. Uh, all in favor signify by waving- Right. I saw Naraj with a thumbs up there, so that's our second. All in favor, signify by waving your hand. There's lots of waves. Any opposed? Same sign. All right. That carries. Thank you, Rachel. So you do have to appoint an auditor for our August meeting. Going alphabetically, that would bring us to O'Reilly. So Denise is not here. As far as I know, she should be able to make our meeting next week. It was just she said she couldn't make the one, or not next week, next month. She just couldn't make it for tonight. So I guess I would nominate to have her, but I wouldn't mind having a backup in case that isn't going to work. And going alphabetically, Shaw would be next, but Naraj is one of the ones who covered for us while we were shut down and kind of came in out of order. And so I don't want to put it on, on, on you right away again, Naraj. So after that, I think it goes all the way back to the beginning, alphabet to Bowie. So Melissa, are you able to be standby if Denise is not available in August? All right. Thank you. So we'll make sure Denise is, is available. And if not, then it'll be Melissa. And just as a heads up for everybody, I know that I won't be at the August meeting. So I'm giving Amy lots of advance notice that you will get to chair next month. So. All right. Anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. I got a motion from Naraj. Would anybody like to second? All right. I saw Rachel. Thank you. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, signify by waving your hand? Be opposed? We're all leaving the meeting without you. So. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. We will be in touch. Take care and stay safe.